Want to do the pledge tonight?
Do I?
I'll just stand here.
Testing, testing. Test, test. Testing, testing.
Mine is still round.
Okay, the March 24th, 2015, regular meeting of the Newport Beach City Council will now reconvene. May we have the roll call, please?
The record will reflect that Councilmember Petros is absent and he has an excused absence.
Okay, Mr. Harp, do we have a closed session report?
Yes, I do. In regards to item four B on the regular agenda, the City Council has authorized the City Attorney's Office to initiate litigation against AIG, one of the city's insurance, excess insurance carriers, to recover amounts paid in attorney's fees or settlement in excess of the city's self-insured retention related to the Craig Frizzell, Steve Schulman, Rob Morton, Christine Hogan, and John Hogan litigation matters. The specifics related to that complaint will be set forth in the complaint, which will be available once it's filed with the court. All council members voted in favor of initiating litigation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Will you please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mayor Pro Tem Dixon, followed by the invocation by Dr. Muzammel Siddiqui of the Islamic Society of Orange County?
Please place your hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Thank you for inviting me to do the invocation at the opening of your monthly meeting of the Newport Beach City Council. I greet you as the Religious Director of the Islamic Society of Orange County in Garden Grove and as Chairman of the Council of Islamic Centers and Organizations in Southern California, officially known as the Islamic Shura Council of Southern California. First, let us pray for the city of Newport Beach, for its people and its officials. Let us pray for God's continued blessings on this city. Let us pray for harmony, understanding, and peace in this city. Let us pray that we all care for each other and help our city grow in happiness and goodness. As you are meeting today as the leaders and decision-makers for the city of Newport Beach, I pray that your decisions will be thoughtful, sincere, and good for your city, for our county, state, for the whole nation, and for the world. We are all interconnected in this global village, and sometimes a small decision or action in one place affects the whole world. We depend on and we need each other. Let us pray that we uphold our nation's good values and reputation in maintaining family, peaceful and caring neighborhood, education, jobs, healthcare, safety, security, civil rights and liberties, clean and healthy environment. Let us pray that we remain true to our pledge of allegiance that we just made cited, "One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." You must see that in all our policies and decisions, we'll continue to abide by this pledge. We must uphold this pledge in the times of comfort and ease and in the times of challenges and strains. Let our democratic values and principles of pluralism, justice, and liberty for all remain our guide all the time, and let this also be our message and mission to the world. Let us pray that we work together and hard to end the epidemic of the culture of greed, a recipe of collective suicide. Let us pray that as individuals and as nation, we shun all hate, prejudice, racism, anti-Semitism, and Islamophobia. Let us remember the golden rule of all religions, cultures, and civilizations: love for your neighbor what you love for yourselves, or do not do to others what you do not want others to do to you. Lord, we pray to you to continue to guide us, to establish justice for all people regardless of their races, colors, or religions. Lord, help us to respect the dignity and honor of all human beings. Grant us the courage to stand for the rights of those who are oppressed, victimized, or ignored. God bless the United States of America and help this nation to be a shining example of peace, justice, and harmony. Amen.
Thank you. Okay, we have no presentations this evening. Madam Clerk?
Notice to the public, the city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the City Council. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium. The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The City Council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones off or set them in the silent mode. Now is the time for City Council announcements or matters which council members would like placed on a future agenda.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Pieter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to have agendize the discussion of the second phase of our artwork that goes in the Civic Center, and I'd also like to agendize the sign code, particularly dealing with open house reeder signs. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Dixon?
Thank you, Mayor Solich. I have a few announcements. First, I'd like to report on the honor I had to represent you, Mayor Solich, at the 44th Annual Police Appreciation Breakfast sponsored by the Newport Beach Chamber of Commerce on March 12. Members of the Police Department were honored at the breakfast, which was attended by over 500 community leaders, volunteers, and city staff. It was a great honor to present recognition and merit awards to 13 officers for their exemplary performance and service to our community. The breakfast also recognized the 20th anniversary on that very day of the death of Officer Bob Henry, who gave his life in service to the people of Newport Beach. It was truly a time to show the community's appreciation for our men and women in uniform. A few announcements for the library. Tomorrow, March 25, from 8:30 to 10:30 in the Friends' Room at the library, the Newport Beach Chamber and the library invite you to a Networking Speakers Series workshop, "Leading in Today's Economy: How Economic Trends Have Changed the Demands for Developing Leaders." Admission is free. Also tomorrow evening, from 7:00 to 8:00, Friends of the Library are presenting "Beyond the Canvas." Paul Cezanne, award-winning Professor Jacqueline Hahn will present "Beyond the Canvas," a fascinating art lecture series, offering insights into legendary artists' lives and artistic movements. Professor Hahn received the Distinguished Instructor Honor from UC Irvine and has traveled the world lecturing on art history. And then finally, from the Fire Department, Earthquake and Tsunami Awareness Workshop tomorrow night also, that'll be a tough choice, between 6:30 and 8:00 PM across here in the community room, and CERT Drill, the Skills Training, Saturday from 9:00 to 1:30 at the Santa Ana Heights Fire Station. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Muldoon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was graciously invited...
That's our feedback?
Turn this down, sorry. So I was graciously invited to attend the 51st Annual Mayor's Prayer Breakfast by Pamela Curry, who was a co-host for the event. Mayor Ed Solich spoke about the importance of prayer before City Council meetings, and we heard from neighboring cities that had the words "In God We Trust" in their council chambers. And it struck to me that despite all the money that we spent on City Hall, we didn't have the most important wording which you could find on American currency. The next study session, or I'm sorry, the next regular session, I would like to explore the different options for the official motto of the United States, "In God We Trust," to be placed in our chambers. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Duffy?
Yes, I'd like to consider restructuring our committees, in particular, the harbor-related committees. Be under the Harbor Commission any of our... We have lots of crossover committees, and I'm hoping to discuss becoming more efficient and having the Harbor Commission oversee those committees.
Thank you. Councilmember Curry?
In 1986, led by Howard Jarvis, California voters enacted Proposition 62 that requires a two-thirds vote of city councils to put a tax increase on the ballot. Subsequent court decisions determined that this only applied to general law cities, and charter cities such as Newport Beach were exempt from its provisions. The Orange County Tax Payers Association, the Orange County Business Council, and local elected officials from throughout Orange County are moving together this year to plug this loophole among the 10 charter cities in Orange County. I note the city of Huntington Beach already has plugged this loophole. Accordingly, I'd like to request that pursuant to city policy, that an item be put on the agenda, asking if the city should put a charter amendment on the 2016 ballot to require five affirmative votes to put a tax increase on the ballot.
Thank you. I have a few announcements. The first one is this Saturday, we're going to have the first annual Mayor's Egg Roll on the Civic Center lawn, and it's going to take place from 10 to noon. It's going to have egg roll races, a magic show, bounce houses, photos with the bunny, arts and crafts, train rides, face painting, and more. There'll be storytime for the kids, donuts and coffee for the parents, and so it's a good opportunity to bring your whole family out and your friends to an enjoyable morning. And I'm going to bring my granddaughter, and I think Councilmember Duffy, you're bringing your grandchild, and so should be a great day. So I encourage everyone to come out and take part in it. Also, along with Councilmember Muldoon and Petros and Curry, I did attend the Mayor's Prayer Breakfast. Mayor Pro Tem Dixon was there also on the 13th, and it's become kind of a contest over the year on who has the best proclamation, and our proclamation was the largest. It was about two by three and a half feet, something like that. So we certainly made our presence known by, at least by the size of our proclamation, if not the words. Then on the 15th, I attended the Spirit Run and did the starting gun for one of the races, the 5K. Councilmember Petros was there also, and he actually ran in the race, and I heard that he won his division, which is good. And then on the 15th of this month, we had Youth Government Day here at City Hall. It's where our high schools come in, and they have a day at City Hall, and they intern with our various department heads, and they have a City Council that conducts a mock City Council meeting. It was an educational, informative day. I think our staff had a lot of fun. I had a lot of fun with it, and it's really encouraging to see how intelligent and engaged the youth of our community are. And some people might say they ran their City Council meeting better than we run ours, but I wouldn't say that. Then also on the 19th, I gave a speech at the Balboa Yacht Club on the different harbor-related projects and activities that the city is engaged in and is initiated in. And then finally, I would like to have an item on the agenda, and that's to consider having a matching grant awarded to the Balboa Angling Club. The Angling Club leases the area where their building sits from the city. It's a club that's 82 years old. It does a lot of public service for our community. They're almost totally responsible for bringing back the white sea bass population with their sea bass pen. They do a lot of youth programs. Fishing is a great recreational activity for the youth in our community, and they're in some need of some repairs to the building there, and I'd like us to consider doing a matching grant. I think the estimate is about $60,000 total, so our share would be $30,000 of that. So I'd like to see that put on the agenda for council to consider. So with that, Madam Clerk?
This is the time in which council members may pull items for the Consent Calendar for discussion, items 1 through 16. Public comments are also invited on Consent Calendar. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the Consent Calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under Consent Calendar are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the City Council votes on the motion unless members of the City Council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the Consent Calendar for separate action.
Thank you. Does any member of the public wish to comment on the Consent Calendar? Okay, seeing none, staff, any items to pull?
We'd like to have item eight. Sorry, that's current business.
Yeah, it's not consent, okay. Okay, any member of the council wish to have anything to pull? Councilmember Muldoon? No. Councilmember Duffy?
None.
Councilmember Curry?
Nothing to pull, but I would like to congratulate you, Mayor Solich, for the Corona Del Mar Pocket Park. That's a project you've worked on long and hard, and it's good to see it coming to fruition.
Thank you. Councilmember Pieter?
None.
Mayor Pro Tem Dixon?
None.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the Consent Calendar?
Mr. Mayor, I move the Consent Calendar, items 1 through 16, with no exceptions.
Second.
Okay, anything to read, Madam Clerk?
Yes, prior to you voting, I'll read the ordinance titles for items 3 and 4. Ordinance number 2015-2, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach, Amending Newport Beach Municipal Code, Chapter 5.50, Regulating Massage Establishments and Repealing Chapter 5.64, Regulating Holistic Health Practitioners." And for item 4, ordinance number 2015-5, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach, Approving an Amendment to Title 20, Zoning Code of the Newport Beach Municipal Code, to Prohibit Residential Condominium Projects in the RBI Zoning District on Balboa Island and Little Balboa Island."
Please vote.
Let's vote. The motion carries unanimously, 6-0.
Okay, Madam Clerk, public comments on non-agenda items?
Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Okay, any comments on non-agenda items?
Yes, my name is Mary Ann Zippe. I sent a letter to all of you last week, and I wanted to make sure that it got into the record at this meeting. 50.3% of Peninsula residents did not vote for parking permits. Yet, using the same tactics as the discarded parking permit survey of 2012, the city has once again released figures which give the perception that the parking permits are approved by a majority of affected residents. This is deceptive because the 50.3 figure represents 269 ballots, which is hardly 50% of the 1,297 ballots to "eligible" owners the city sent out, even if that number correctly represents eligible residents, which it doesn't. The municipal code states that a majority, 50% plus one of residents, must approve a parking permit program, and there is no equivocation in that language. On February 4th, at a town hall meeting, and again on March 11th, at the Balboa Village Advisory Committee meeting, after ballots were sent out, incidentally, city staff admitted that they didn't have a census of residents. Without a census, how do you know when you've reached 50% plus one of residents? According to staff, it's difficult to find out how many residents there actually are. So they may have to accept 50% of those they can get a hold of instead of abiding by the municipal code. On February 4th, a member of staff, in answer to a resident with five tenants in one unit, said that every resident got a vote. Yet, on March 11th, the same staff member contradicted his February 4th statement by saying that only one vote per residential unit was allowed, disavowing municipal code rules that establish one vote per resident. The ballots were supposed to be returned by February 27. However, the city is still accepting ballots and even planning on knocking on doors to get more. But who counted the ballots? Where are they? And are they secured so that they can be recounted if necessary? The rules are in place, but if the city chooses, they don't have to abide by the rules, whether it be cutoff dates or residents mandated by the municipal code. So why even have a municipal code? By its own documentation, the city stands to make a quarter of a million dollars per year on this program. There's never been a majority of residents who want this program, no matter how many surveys the city has spent taxpayer money on. The obvious conclusion is that the city wants this program, not the residents. And I really believe that since we have so many new members on the council, that this matter needs to be considered. There are a lot of other alternatives. We've even discussed those, such as a shuttle program like they have in Newport Beach. We needn't put the burden of the parking problems on seven blocks of the peninsula. Why not have a shuttle program and use this empty parking structure you have here as a staging base for it? That's my suggestions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on non-agenda items?
Mike Glenn, resident of Balboa Peninsula. I have to agree with the previous speaker. The entire process of the polling here being done on the parking situation has been flawed from the beginning. Initially, we had flyers that were being put on cars. I've had feedback from multiple residents that other residents were going and collecting those flyers to send them in themselves. Then we had flyers, or things that were being mailed to individual homes, one per house, not dependent on how many residents are in that house. I did not receive one of these. Many other residents did not. One could assume that the same situation was going on there. We have a voting process that's already been perfected. There's a fire station there that everybody votes at. I don't see why we can't duplicate the same way we voted everybody in office here with that. It seems fair, it seems concise, and it seems indisputable. The method we've been going around, the several methods that we've been using to try to consolidate some sort of vote here, had been flawed from the beginning. So I wanted to state that. Also, the City Hall audit, I went back through the study sessions there. It seems like that we have asked staff to review their own audit, their own prior audit to this, and they came back with two thumbs up. I would highly encourage us to get an outside audit on this. And Duffy, I know the tide lens is kind of your thing, and I saw that kind of the same thing happened there. That is a mess, as we see. It's very complex, very convoluted. I think that an outside audit there would be helpful as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on non-agenda items? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to oral reports from City Council on committee activities. Councilmember Pieter?
None.
Mayor Pro Tem Dixon?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. On March 12, the Water Quality Committee met in a strategic planning goal-setting session to identify the committee's priority, short, medium, and long-term goals. The committee received input from the staff on its recommendations as well as input from community members. The committee meets again on April 9 to finalize its priorities for the coming year. On March 11, the Balboa Village Advisory Committee met to review the current status of the Residential Permit III Program, and as you've just heard, surveys are being resent to residents whose ballots were returned. As of March 11, 269 residents supported the residential permit plan and 266 opposed. I understand from staff that ballot results continue to reflect a fairly even split. The committee continues to manage the furtherance of the Balboa Village Economic Improvement Plans, facade improvement, streetscape, and wayfinding signage. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Muldoon?
None.
Councilmember Duffy?
None.
Councilmember Curry?
As a member of the Sanitation District Board, I had the honor of going out on the NARISA, which is the research vessel which is used to monitor the ocean outfall. Much of the sewage that we have is treated. A lot of it is pumped back into the groundwater system, and what is not is piped out about four and a half miles off coast, off the coast of Huntington Beach, and then it's monitored after it's been treated. We took samples of water. We took samples of the ground on the ocean floor, and also took a haul of fish to examine them for any signs of contamination. I'm pleased to report that it's a very clean environment off the coast, despite the fact of what it is. The interesting thing, and also on this vessel, there were two PhDs and several research scientists who are very, very capable in the work that they do to keep our ocean clean. On the way back into the harbor, we picked up, the one thing I will note, is that we picked up three Mylar balloons out of the water, two from Valentine's Day and one from a quinceanera. So it's important that we all take our responsibility to keep the ocean clean from things like that getting into it. Thank you.
Thank you. I just have one announcement. The General Plan, Local Coastal Plan Committee, is going to meet this Thursday at 4:30 PM in the Newport Coast Room. That's Bay 2E up on the second floor. So we'll move on to current business. Our first item of business is item number 17, the Newport Boulevard and 32nd Street Modification, Approval of Revised Parking Lot Concept Plan. Staff?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers Dave Webb and Public Works Director. This is a proposal to make a slight modification to a current project that's in process. Back in November 12 of 2014, we brought you the concept for approval of Newport Boulevard running from Vialito down to 30th Street, which was adding two lanes, one in each direction, along with bike lanes along Newport Boulevard. It was removing the street parking. In the process, we also purchased the old bank building on the corner, and we were turning it into a municipal parking lot. The concept before you is the concept that council approved on the November meeting. This is a parking lot with 33 stalls in it. In the access out this parking lot, if I could point to that for the new council members, this is 32nd, and Newport's down below it. There's an alley cross here, and the access is going to be out a driveway, a new driveway here on DeMarcus. In the process of that, we later had a discussion in an actual nice meeting with the neighborhood there that didn't get a chance or somehow didn't get connected with the project, and was really concerned with the new access point on DeMarcus. We had a discussion with them, and we promised them to look at some alternative designs. We did come up with a relatively nice alternative design, I think, that meets the satisfaction of both the staff and the city and the folks that live on Marcus. This would be the proposed new parking lot design, which has the same alley access along the corner, goes through, but then has an access back onto 32nd Street and removes the access on Marcus here. This alleviates the concerns of the neighborhood, that people will be cutting through their neighborhood from accessing Marcus directly. It does also move the driveway away from staff's concerns. It used- It used to be down in this corner, which is more of a safety concern, so we're allowed to push it off this direction. The only difference here is that you will not be able to make left turns anymore. It'll be a right-in, right-out driveway. However, we do pick up a parking stall in this, which is also a gain for the city. The original concept we showed you and approved back in November basically removed 27 street stalls on street parking, and we provided 33 new stalls in the parking lot with a net gain of six. In the new revised configuration, we're removing 25 on-street parking stalls. That is, two stalls on Marcus that would have been removed due to the new driveway location or not being dislocated. And the new lot picks up 32 spots, which gives us a net gain of seven spots. So we're recommending to council tonight to go ahead and switch this concept out to this new revised concept. The landscaping will still be of the equivalent nature, very lush, very high-end landscaping along the corner to add beautification that's shown in the original concept. It'll just come into this concept here where you'll be able to fill in these planners here. And that would be our report.
Thank you. I don't see any requests to speak, so open this for public comment. Anyone who wants to comment on this item, please come forward.
Hi, my name is Jenny Frank, and I would just like to start by thanking Mayor Pro Tem Dixon and Dave Webb and Dave Kiff. They were very receptive to the concerns of the neighborhood. We were not initially aware of the proposed project, and when the neighborhood became aware, there was a lot of buzz initially, concern that the driveway coming onto our residential road would lead to more traffic accessing that parking lot, not necessarily residential traffic. And they were very receptive to our conversations and very willing to work with us. And the community and that immediate neighborhood is very happy with the revised plan, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, my name is George Schroeder, and I just want to thank staff for coming up with this Plan B. And also, I would like to say that perhaps the consultant who you gave 150,000 to who came up with the Plan A, perhaps they'll give you a refund on that fee that you paid them, because their Plan A was just a terrible plan from the get-go. And this is, you know, I have very good friends, Tom and Maureen Terrick, who owned the second home on Marcus Avenue, and the concept to dump traffic onto Marcus Avenue that might want to turn right because they want to go back to Huntington Beach and put it through narrow, one-way streets was just a bad concept. So I hope that staff would think before they hire a consultant from out of the area and tell them to think outside of the box, take 150,000, come back with like oversized lawn furniture, a person can come and take pictures of themselves on, and fountains and things like that, that we might just want to use that 150,000 in-house and just go with an easier plan and involve the people who live next door who are going to be impacted by it. This is a good plan, so please support Plan B. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to council. Councilmember Dixon?
Well, I just want to echo what our residents have just said. Thank you, Dave. And Dave, it was a perfect example of communities speaking and staff and others listening. It was a very good discussion, a good process, and I commend you for being open to new ideas and listening to the community. So I am very delighted that it was such a satisfactory result. And I think I agree with Mr. Schroeder that I think it is a better plan going forward, my own scientific personal opinion. So thank you very much.
Would you like to make a motion on that?
I move to accept the new plan for 32nd Street.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, please vote when the screen comes up. Okay, on to item number 18, the Balboa Village Facade Improvement Program Funding.
This next item, I'm finally able to request continuance on this one, and that would be for two weeks.
Okay.
Can we continue for two weeks? No, it's three weeks, sorry. I can't even get that right. Yeah, till the council's next meeting.
Okay, do we have a second to that?
Second.
Any public comment on this? Okay, seeing none, bring it back to council.
I'm sorry, Mayor, who made the motion? Thank you.
Please vote when the screen comes up.
The motion to continue passed unanimously, six-zero.
Okay, we'll move on to item number 19. This is the Corona Del Mar Fire Station Number Five and Library Replacement, Its Approval of a Professional Services Agreement with WLC Architects. Staff?
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. Yes, before you tonight, we have the approval of the architect selection, WLC Architects, for the design of the Fire Station Number Five and the Corona Del Mar Branch Library Replacement. Many of you are familiar with the site, just north of Coast Highway there off of Marigold. The existing buildings were built in the '50s. There's been several additions over the years with the library, as well as with the fire station. And you can note in the upper right-hand corner that some of the fire folks are actually in, you know, mobile units as well, too. Here's another just street view picture of the front facade of the building. As you can see, you know, it's out of date, even in terms of trying to fit equipment into that building and with lodging. The Branch Library, again, it's dated as well, too. In your agenda packet, we have, we went through a selection process where we've recommended the selection of WLC Architects as the architect for this project. We spent some preliminary funding to develop some conceptual layouts to measure square footages and look at some special features that are needed in fire facilities in particular, and to work on the cost estimate so we can develop our budget. So these are the conceptual plans that are in the document for the first floor, as well as the second floor. And as you can see also, too, parking for the site, as well as for, you know, overnight parking, which ends up being a real practical use for the facility, was an important factor. In terms of outreach to the community, we're really excited about getting this step started here, too. I know there's been discussion in the community that, you know, what are the, what are the going to be the next steps? When is the opportunity to, you know, to provide comments? And now is going to be the time. Once we have this architect on board, we're going to go and schedule these meetings with the library board. We're going to be attending, we're already on the agenda for the Resident Association meeting for Corona Del Mar. We're going to host a neighborhood meeting out there, coffee and donuts. Library, fire department staff are going to walk through and go through their checklist of needs and answer questions with the architect under contract. From there, we gather all of that input and then, you know, get the pencils down, or actually, pencils are working at that point, you know, coming up with the drawings. And then, and over the summer, and then over the fall, we go back and we touch base with folks and say, hey, this is, this is the project. This is what it looks like, based on your feedback. What do you think? Is this good enough? Do we need to tweak anything? And hopefully by the end of this calendar year, we'll have some final designs and plan checking and go out to bid, and this time next year, we can start construction. So that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions. And if I could just elaborate just one comment on there. As Mark said, we do have a concept, but it's not, it's just something to talk around that community sees a concept. We haven't put anything in stone yet. We just needed something to see, can we fit things on? That's the block diagram you saw. But that's even being tweaked now, how we might modify that, and that's all subject to conversations with the community and council to come up with an actual concept we'll bring to you for approval.
Can you briefly explain to us what the, just what the design criteria to this point is for the fire station and the library? I mean, what have you decided in terms of square footage, in terms of uses, facilities? What has, what has the architect been given so far?
Well, we went through a pretty exhaustive process to look at, at those square footages. In particular, for the library, just starting off to, you know, our facility financing master plan has deemed that to be a 2,500-square-foot library, which is, it is smaller than the existing library that they have, although there are still, you know, some inefficiencies in the existing use. And then in particular, for the fire department, we went through and we looked at all of the different requirements that they have, you know, for example, for their turnout gear and for, you know, medical storage facilities that have to be separated, for the sizes of their equipment, you know, for dormitories and things like that, too. And we did basically, almost like a zero-based budget, where we started from zero, and we built building blocks to grow into what we thought was the most efficient size. It is, it is a small station by comparison, but it's, it's two-and-a-half times larger than they have today.
Okay, thank you. Okay, open this up for public comment. Anybody who wants to address the council on this item, please come forward.
I'm Elizabeth Starr, and I've now lived in Corona Del Mar about 45 years. And the library was the very first place that I found before the grocery store. This library has vital purpose in our area. It is a place where the senior citizens go to read the morning paper. They do not have a car, they walk to go there. It is a place where we have 100 people come to storytime. We have 50 preschool children and 50 nannies who come on one morning. I fear that it's not going to be as big as what we have, and sometimes we have every seat occupied in that library. And if we have 100 children in the room at the same time, it's a lot of people in a small space. We could not ask for better staff than we have at this facility. They know the people who walk in the door. They do a terrific job, and it's a community center unlike anything else Newport Beach has. So I'm very eager that it be carefully built and carefully thought through, and that there is enough safety for all of these preschool children that come in the door. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment?
Mayor Selig and members of the council. My name is Jim Mosher. I have many friends in Corona Del Mar, but I am heretical enough to raise the question of if the city maintains a library system that has one central library and three branch libraries, as the mayor asked earlier about the fire station. I think one can ask a reasonable question of whether this actually is the best location to serve the largest part of our population of Newport Beach, and it's not obvious to me that it is. However, if we are going to rebuild something in Corona Del Mar, I would agree with Ms. Starr that we want to do as good as we can. And so I have another question, which is, if we're, have put out a bid for proposals for architects, why we, the public, and you, the decision-makers, are not making, seeing the creative ideas for what could be done with this location by the nine respondents and just being told here as one? I really don't understand that. The proposal here of the blank rectangle, which is the library, doesn't seem like a particularly creative solution. I'm not even sure why the rectangle is the size that it is. And I would also be heretical enough to question what the staff is telling you in the report that this proposed size of 2,500 square feet is consistent with our so-called major facilities master plan. I'm not assured that we have a major facilities master plan, but this is the facilities financing plan that we heard in the oral report. This is what you looked at at your January 31st planning session. It says that the library in Corona Del Mar is currently 4,323 square feet, and the plan is to replace it with a structure of 4,000. Now, I don't think this is an official document. It's never been approved by the entire City Council, but it does say 4,000 instead of 2,500, and it says that the fire station was smaller than the library, 2,495, and the plan is to replace it with 8,000. What that means, I don't know, but I assume that means the two together were going to be 8,000, so it's going to be 4,000 library, 4,000 fire station. That I take as what the plan was. It seems to be something different than that. And final comment, well, not the final comment. Looking at the contract that is here, I find it curious that the contract runs through June 30th of 2019, period of four years from now, when the architect's role ends with the bids for construction, which are supposed to come towards the end of next year. Why, and it's supposed to be finished in a year? Why so long a contract? And then I would finally point out, in my recollection, we have never done a library construction where we had to shut down and demolish the old building before the new one was built. So usually, the new one is built somewhere at a different location so that they can remain open. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Wendy Salter, Corona Del Mar, and I've lived in Corona Del Mar for over 40 years now. I'm wondering if there will be a survey eventually for us to comment on the library. It appears that already they are shrinking the library size by a third, and I've taken my grandchildren to the library storytimes for several years now, and it's woefully too small already for the space that it needs to be for these children. I know we have another storytime over at the large library, but we have so many, so many people from out of Newport Beach who come for our storytimes that I'm not sure whether we need to do something about that or not in order to have enough room for the residents of Newport Beach. But I'm hoping that there will be a section for input of design concepts before you make final decisions on the library, and would hope that you consider making it a larger. It's already smaller than it should be for the functions that they have in the library. And the last comment is, is there a possibility that you might be using the giant Rex Brandt mural in that new library? It would seem to be a very good spot to showcase his art. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Selig, Councilmember staff, Carl Cassidy. Actually, I was asked to come, and forgive my lack of professional dress, I got an email last minute to ask to come and speak on item 22, but I'd like to contrast this matter, that this has already made it before you, and there's been a lot of work done by staff. I've been to the library trustees, and in comparison to some of the other items, there's been a lot of staff work, the library trustees have looked at this. Quite frankly, I'd love to see the library tripled in size, if we had the money and, but this item comes to you with a lot of work that's already been done and some programmed work that's going to be looked at in the future. So it seems to me that it makes sense to move it along. There is, there is additional space, you might note, at the Oasis. There's been library facilities and a computer room added at Oasis that might, which is less than a half mile away, it's probably like a quarter mile away, that takes some of the pressure off. But like I said, I'd love to see this be a much larger library, too, but maybe in working with the architect, we can move this along. So it's come to you where some of the other items, I don't think are right, right, ready to come to you, but I'm in favor of you approving this at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to council. Is there any discussion or motion? Selig? Yeah, Councilmember Curry?
Well, I will move approval of the item. Let me just say to staff, when we do these concept plans, they somehow lock some things into stone, and I think we've heard testimony from the people. I'm not really hung up about the actual, you know, square footage. I am concerned about the usable square feet within the space that's open to the public. I understand we're eliminating some perhaps inefficient back office area. But I want to make sure that we're thinking ahead in terms of technology for the library, and we're thinking ahead in terms of how to make it the best space it possibly can be for the young people who use it, because it really is a great community treasure and resource, and I'd love to see us continue to move forward with this. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Dixon?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. A couple of questions along the same line of thought. In reading this, in reading the staff report, I first was surprised about an architect in Rancho Cucamonga, but that's okay, and apparently they're specialists in doing fire station design, which is terrific. But as we note here, a lot of the conversation is about a library. So I don't know what the architect's expertise is, particularly if we're looking at technologies of libraries today, community rooms, how the multipurpose aspect, reading aspect. I don't know if a fire station architect really has the latest. So anyway, there needs to be some sub-expertise and... So anyway, there needs to be some sub-expertise identified in doing this project, and as we hear from the community. This is a really an important touchstone and touchpoint to the community that clearly, as you've outlined, the community interface, meetings and such. I think on the design, one of the speakers mentioned, before we even selected the architect, to know what kind of work they do in this type of joint combined structure. I haven't, I trust you folks that you've asked those right kind of questions. I mean, as strict fire station designers, they could be world-class, but to combine the two and two different types of service providing type activities, community-facing and professional-facing, they're just different uses now that we're starting to put them together. I would like to see the evolution of the design involve a lot of community impact or interaction, so, thank you.
Councilmember Muldoon.
Thank you. Looking at the rough conceptual layout, I have one concern in the shared lobby. I don't know how safe that will be because there'll be children, people tend to spend more time at the library, and I view the firehouse as a place of serious safety concern where quick ingress and egress, and I think it may be smart to consider completely segregating the two, still having an entrance near each other, but, and then shifting this shared lobby space over to the library. It would answer the library square footage use problem, but I think it would also protect some potential hazards. Thanks.
Councilmember Piattar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I want to put my two cents in, too. I like the design. I like the fact that the library is a flex space so we can use it as a big meeting room or divide it into two. I do like Councilman Curry's ideas of making sure that we've got the technology there, that if we want to use it as a, you know, multimedia-type classroom, we have that availability. I'm not as concerned about the shared lobby because frankly, fire stations don't need lobbies. They come in the back, they go out the front, they don't ever go out the lobby. And I want to congratulate staff, and let's get this thing going.
Councilmember Duffy.
Well, on the lighter side of things, our fire chief is out there, and I just don't know how this possibly escaped him, or you, Dave. How am I supposed to tell my grandkid, "Where's the fire pole?" I was so impressed with the other fire station that had a fire pole. That thing was cool, but I guess that's not in the technology today. Just a lighter side of things.
Those invite workers' comp claims.
Okay.
So I would just add, add one comment to the comments that have been made. I don't think we're locked in to twenty-five hundred square feet, are we? We go through these community meetings and we discuss the needs and the actual function of the building, if it's, you know, bigger, you know, it's not out of the question, it's more a matter of trying to ascertain what the function is and the best use and most economical use of the spaces. Would that be correct?
Yes, that's correct, mayor. So when we meet with the library board, we'll really look into the functionality of the space that they need, and if it does need to increase for certain size requirements, you know, we'll look at that. Every square footage you add, you know, adds money to the project, too. So, but in terms of what they have in current size and current use, and the example that they have right now with the children's area that's in the main library, too, we can get a real kind of idea of how we can create a very usable space. You know, sometimes square footages, you know, they may be, they may have, they may give you a different, different thought, you know, just like our street name signs, too. You would never think that they're six feet long, but all of a sudden they are, and so some of that perception will work through and look at real-life examples.
Well, it might have helped if there would have been some detail in the, in the box showing, you know, what kind of uses were going in there and how the space was going to be used. Might have allayed some of the concerns that the council's received from the community on this. Okay, did we have a second to Councilmember Curry's motion? Okay, is there a second?
I second.
I second.
Okay, please vote when the screen comes up. Okay, we'll move on to item twenty. This is a lease agreement between the City of Newport Beach and Lighthouse Cafe LLC, authorizing the lease of restaurant space at the Marina Park project located at sixteen-hundred West Balboa Boulevard.
Thank you, Mayor Selig. I think you just summed up our staff report. Real property administrator Lauren Whitlinger and I are here to answer any questions, but it's a fifteen-year lease with two five-year extensions for the project, and it's going to go into the new Marina Park, and we're very excited about it.
Okay, thank you. I don't see any requests from council to speak. I'll open it for public comment. Anybody in public wish to comment on this item? Okay, seeing no one, we'll bring it back to council for motion. Okay, please vote when the screen comes up.
Motion carries unanimously, six-zero.
Okay, our next item is item twenty-one. This is an update to the Newport Beach Municipal Code, Section 5.04, Business Licenses and Regulations, General Provisions.
Good evening, mayor, members of the city council. My name's Steve Montano, I'm the deputy finance director. This item before you proposes a number of amendments to Chapter 5.04 of the municipal code relating to the business license tax. This code section was enacted in nineteen oh six and has not been significantly revised since nineteen ninety-three. The most significant change is the exempting of real estate agents affiliated with brokerages from the business license tax. This item was discussed at a council study session last year where real estate agents asked the council to consider exempting them from the business license tax. They argued in effect that agents are employees of the brokerage, which they in turn also pay the tax. Under this new code provision, agents would be considered employees of the brokers, and brokers would pay a per-employee tax for their agents. We estimate this change would reduce revenues by approximately a hundred and five thousand dollars, based on our accounting of receipts since we stopped collecting the business license tax from real estate agents back in May of twenty fourteen. Other proposed changes are in furtherance of providing more favorable business environment by allowing for, among other things, payment plans in cases of hardship, reducing the delinquent penalties, and increasing the artist's exemption threshold. Finally, there's a couple of changes, proposed changes that would bring our code into conformance with state law. These changes would exempt qualified veterans from the business license tax and their businesses, and bring the fees charged to out-of-town contractors in parity with in-town contractors. This concludes my short presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, I don't see any requests to speak from council, so open this up to public comment. Anybody from the public wish to comment? Okay, seeing no one, I'll bring it back to council. Come on up, Jim. Got to move quickly.
Mayor Selig, members of the council, my name is Jim Moser. Given the importance we have heard of the distinction between taxes and fees, I found it amusing to read the discussion part of this staff report, first sentence of which said the Newport Beach business license tax is a fee. And when I read the second sentence, that this had been enacted in nineteen oh six, I thought that was probably a typo, but I did go back and verify that, and in the first month of the trustees of Newport Beach's existence, they did enact this, and it is online in our Laserfish archive as ordinance number five, twenty-three handwritten pages. The ordinances were written out by hand back then. And in those twenty-three pages, they managed to articulate the ordinance without once using either the word tax or fee. In those days, you just paid for a license. And that original ordinance from nineteen oh six enumerated fifty-three businesses, which in order to operate, you had to buy a license. It specifically addressed the real estate issue, and both the broker and all the employees of the broker who were involved in real estate sales had to buy a five-dollar-per-year license to do so. As these ordinances evolve and get amended over the years, they collect all these kind of warts from the amendments that are made to them, and sometimes it becomes difficult to perceive their original purpose. The original ordinance said that it applied to every business, trade, et cetera, et cetera, whatever that was specified in the ordinance. It still kind of says that, except the ordinance no longer specifies businesses, so we just have a paragraph in it defining what a business is, and it basically is any possible activity. So if one literally read this wart-and-barnacle-covered ordinance after all these years, anybody doing anything in Newport Beach, as I read it, needs a business license, eh? Whether it's for profit or not for profit, it says. Sounded to me like a parent raising children probably needs a business license in Newport Beach to engage in that activity. I probably need a business license to come here because I have this bizarre calling of wanting to talk to you. Regarding the change about the real estate agents, I really don't see much substance to it. The staff said that they can read it already administratively, that it does what the change would do, namely that the agent is either their own person who needs a license or their employee of somebody else, and that person pays the license for them. And finally, I see the time is running out. So the veterans thing, which was also mentioned at the end, that one I did read, staff report says it in effect exempts qualified veterans, organizations, and businesses from the tax. I couldn't read anything that had to do with that. It was and still is a license that applies to an individual, not to an organization, so I don't know what the staff report is talking about. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Muldoon, did you want to speak now or wait till after public comment? Go ahead, George.
Yes, George Schroeder. I was not going to speak, but just for clarification, well, this was decided by the last council before the election, and the last council did ask staff to change this ordinance and to exempt real estate agents, because a licensed agent is not a business. Once a person passes the salesman's license, the first thing he has to do is go and, and sign a contract at a real estate broker's office, and he cannot do any business under his own name, cannot sign a contract under his own name, cannot collect any commission under his own name. It's just because of the fact that it gets paid a ten ninety-nine, there's a loophole where they can choose to treat him like a business even though he is not a business. No other city in Orange County charges individual sales agents who are not businesses a hundred and fifty bucks per agent at a business. So despite what Mr. Moser says, and, you know, so I just hope you take staff's recommendation and clean this up and do what the last council agreed to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay, seeing none, Councilmember Muldoon.
Thank you. Great performance, Jim, by the way, enjoyed that. Is this a tax or is this a fee?
This is in fact a tax.
It is?
Yes.
Okay. So the other council already decided how this would be determined, correct? What the actual outcome would be?
Of the real estate agents in particular?
Yes.
Yes, they asked staff to bring this back and formalize it in the form of these amendments.
Okay, but the action's already been taken, so that that reduction's occurred?
They did, they did direct us to do it administratively if we could. We found out that we could, and then to follow up with a code amendment.
So the problem I have is not with that being done administratively, I hope that stays, but this is just poorly wart-ridden legislation, in my opinion, and I have some concerns about it. One is that failure to have a license can subject you to a misdemeanor, and in my opinion, this does not rise to the level of criminal activity, whether you have a business license or not, within the city. I find it very concerning. You could argue citation is worthy and a non-crime citation, but, you know, I can't support any language that says that not having a business license is a misdemeanor, goes against what I think is a good sense of justice. I'm also quite confused by the wording of this, especially in the staff report, whether it is or not a tax or fee. And if it is a fee in fact, or a tax, whatever it is, I'm more concerned with looking at, lower than across the board than I would approving this language. So, you know, as is written, there's, there's no way I can support the staff report. Thank you.
Councilmember Piattar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I have a problem, too. I have a problem with it being a tax. I have a problem with the, like Mr. Muldoon brings up, the right to access and the right to entry is, is very heavy-handed. Basically, the finance, Dan Vasquez can go and get the, get a police officer and go and force his way into a business to examine his books, which I don't think I really care for. You know, I have no problem exempting agents, I totally understand the concept between agents and brokers, and the agents, even though they're individual ten ninety-nine-type businesses, they can't operate without a broker. I have a problem with this. You know, I was sitting on the city's website, it, basically, it's a hundred sixty-two dollars for a base license, if I'm getting this right. A dollar goes to the state, and then if you collect sales tax, it's only eight dollars per employee with a maximum of eight hundred and eleven dollars. Or sixteen dollars, if you don't collect sales tax, sixteen dollars per employee, up to a maximum of sixteen hundred and twenty-one dollars. Again, I see what we're doing. You get less of what you tax, and so in effect, we're taxing employees in the city of Newport Beach. You know, just, I'd just soon get rid of it, not just for agents, but let's get rid of it for every business in the city. Let's get rid of the tax altogether. Or evaluate whether or not we ought to go to a fixed fee like Irvine or Tustin, where they just charge you fifty bucks a year, and they use that as the cost to kind of offset, or a fee to offset the cost of maintaining a database to see who comes into the city and does business. You know, if you're Joe the Plumber, use that example, and you're replacing a water heater for somebody in town, and they're a friend, you don't do a lot of work in Newport, you don't have a business license in Newport. It costs you three hundred and fifty bucks for a water heater, labor can be three to six hundred dollars, but you're going to charge him a hundred and sixty-two dollars for a, a, a business license on top of the fifty dollars that he hopefully pays to go get his permit, because he probably blows it off because he doesn't want to bother with the, the license fee. So I can't support it. I would actually like to see us refer to the finance committee and let them review the four-point-one million dollars of revenue that we get every year on this, and come back with a recommendation on whether we abolish the fee altogether, or whether we go to a fifty-dollar fee, or, you know, maybe they'll recommend that we, that we can't live without this four-point-one million dollars of tax money. And I know the Irvine company and all these big companies, it's no big deal to them, eight hundred bucks, sixteen hundred bucks, but, you know, if you're working out of your house and you get called because, hey, you've got an LLC there, or let's say you've got twenty LLCs because you're a real estate developer working out of your house, and you got to pay a hundred and sixty-two dollars for every one of those LLCs because they send your mail to your, to your house. Well, next thing you do is you're getting a P.O. box in another city so that you don't have to pay the sixteen thousand dollars or whatever it amounts to for the number of LLCs that you've got. It's, it's ridiculous to do business that way. I don't think Newport Beach comes across as being business-friendly when we sit there and tax employees like this. So I would, when we're done, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to propose a, a motion to that effect.
Okay. I'd move approval of the item. Okay, is there a second?
I'd like to provide an alternative motion that we refer to the finance commission.
First, we got to see if there's a second. Is there a second? I'll second the motion.
I'd like to provide an alternative motion.
May I speak to the motion? Well, let's let Councilmember Curry speak to the motion, and then Councilmember Duffy wants to speak, then we'll come back to you.
The issue here is that we've already done this on behalf of the real estate industry. We should clean up our business license tax laws right now, codify this, and move forward. Now, we don't do LLCs, there have been, people have complained about that, we've gone through and looked at that, so we've cleaned that up, so that's really not an issue. And what happens here is when you put this out on the agenda, Mr. Piattar sort of out of the blue shows up and wants to cut four million dollars out of the budget. That's just financially irresponsible. So let's do this methodically. If, you know, the, the finance committee, I don't have a problem with the finance committee looking at all of our revenues through the course of the year to see if they're appropriately set. But the business license in every city plays an important role in making sure that there are legitimate businesses, that you know who to find, you know, your contractor if they disappear, or they're knocking on your door trying to do work, gives you the ability to regulate sort of who's doing business in the city, which is a good thing. And we've had, other than the real estate matter and the LLC matter, which we cleaned up about four years ago, no complaints from anybody about our business license structure in Newport Beach.
Okay. Okay, we'll go to Councilmember Duffy.
Aaron, I'm sorry.
Aaron, I'm sorry to bring this up, and I just realized I have a business license. I shouldn't be voting on this?
No, you're fine to vote on it because you fall into the public generally exception related to this item because it impacts all businesses in the city.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to Councilmember Piattar, then to Councilmember Muldoon, and I think you want to make an amending motion?
Sure, I'd like to propose a substitute motion to refer to the Finance Committee.
Is there a second to that?
Happy to second it and happy if that fails to finish my remarks on the pending motion with Curry.
Okay, well, Councilmember Muldoon, go ahead.
Thank you. The reason why at this time I'm not supporting this motion is, or this ordinance has written is that I believe it's overly expansive. It changes the Finance Director and each of his assistants to designees in any police officer or city employee whose job includes inspection of business license, the power to enter a business and potentially give a misdemeanor. So my interpretation of that, which I think is a reasonable interpretation, is that it's overly broad power given to a designee of the Finance Director, and I think it would be a waste of police resources, and it's too heavy-handed to call any such violation a misdemeanor. So that's why I'm opposing the wording, but I'm not opposing what you've already done administratively, which you can do without our decision at any rate. So that's just the debate that I wanted to add to the motion that Councilman Curry put forward.
Mayor Protim Dixon.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Can we, well, I support what Councilmember Muldoon just said. Is there a way to clean up that language so we could move forward and if we agree that that's an objectionable and overreaching type of provision, I would support its removal and support us moving forward on this measure.
We definitely could modify the ordinance to basically make it not criminal conduct for a violation of the provisions. And as far as the right of entry, we can revise that as well. So both those are issues that can be addressed. I would like to hear maybe from the Finance Director about the right of entry and if he has any thoughts on a proposed revision to that section.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I am the License Supervisor that oversees the Business License Program through the Revenue Division. Currently, right now, the license is supposed to be posted in a conspicuous place inside of a commercial business. What we did amend to the code is that we would not enter a private residence without a court warrant. But the business license does need to be placed in a conspicuous place that the public can see while entering the business. So that gives the License Supervisor, code enforcement, and the police officers also the right to enter a place of business, and we should be able to also conspicuously see the business license posted on the wall.
Maybe a good way to address that issue as far as the right of entry is to allow them to enter it if it's during open hours, it's open to the public, and as opposed to having something broader than that.
I think that's great. It's very reasonable, it makes sense, it's not trusive, and the other thing that I'm concerned about is just it's a misdemeanor. Of course, it should be posted, I believe in that, but there are countless ways to find someone civilly or through ordinance that doesn't require criminal filings.
Okay, so the proposed modification would be non-criminal, make it non-criminal conduct, so you could still issue an administrative citation and then change the right-of-entry provision so that inspections can only occur during hours that the business is open to the public? Because I'm just trying to make sure I understand.
I don't object to those amendments, Mr. Muldoon. If you'd like, I'd be happy to incorporate those specific amendments. I don't think this is, by the way, at all different than what we do to check and see whether somebody has a building permit, or a fishing license, or any other, or they have a permit to use a portion of the park, frankly, if they've rented it for a time. I think the posting is a requirement of state law, so I think we need, want to be consistent with that, and I think we want to move on here and not sort of, but I think those are good thoughts, and I think we can incorporate them within here. Unless staff has any heartburn on anything in terms of administrative, no, I think we're all good with this.
Okay, well, first, we have to deal with the substitute motion before we get into those changes to your motion. So is there any comments on the substitute motion? I'll just say I'm not going to support the substitute motion. Councilman Piattar, I don't have a problem with it going to the Finance Committee, but I think we ought to deal with the ordinance that's on the book, the objections that everyone's raising are primarily geared toward the ordinance as it's presently written and not the real estate industry. I think we made a commitment to the Realtors to get this memorialized in the ordinance. We should deal with that, with the amendments that Councilmember Muldoon suggested to Councilmember Curry's motion. We can pass that motion and then take a separate action to refer it to the Finance Committee. And so I won't be supporting the substitute motion.
See, I don't have a problem if you want to call it a $50 flat fee and not call it a tax. You want to make that amendment too, we don't have to send it to the Finance Committee. But with the tax the way that it is, we had a $5.5 million surplus last year, this is a $4.1 million tax. Last year, the council gave a Newport dividend and gave free building permits to residential property owners. This is returning the tax money to the people who paid it when we have a surplus. It makes sense, and the dollar amounts are pretty close to being what we had as surplus. So I have no problem reducing or getting rid of the tax. I also don't necessarily have the objection of knowing who's doing business in the city and charging a reasonable fee to keep track of that, not a tax. So if, I will gladly withdraw my substitute motion if we'll add, if we'll change the, if the maker of the motion's willing to accept a $50 fee and change it from tax to fee, I could support that.
No, that is the most irresponsible type of budgeting totally imaginable, to sit here and whack $4 million out of the budget because you think it's a good idea, and to sit here and decide we're going to call it a fee even though state law and Proposition 218 calls it a tax. I didn't even think we could do that if we wanted to, not that it would be wise policy.
The $50 fee, the $50 portion would be a fee to keep a database going for businesses. It's legitimately a fee. This is correctly called a tax, which is why I don't support it, because we're taxing based on the number of employees. And it's a tax that may have been around since 1906, that doesn't mean I have to like it. Anyway.
So I'm supporting Mr. Piattar's motion. Let's see what happens with that one first, whether or not send the Finance Committee and then move forward with the language, which is the real reason why we're here.
Okay. Any other comments from council? Okay, please vote on the substitute motion. Mr. Piattar's substitute motion, that's what we're voting on.
Send it back to the Finance Committee. With Councilmembers Dixon, Mayor Selig, and Councilmember Curry voting no, the motion fails 3-3.
Okay, so now we'll move back to the main motion. Councilmember Curry, do you want to restate your main motion with the changes?
My motion is to approve the recommended action with the items noted by Councilmember Muldoon, which include, I think, changing it from a definition of a misdemeanor to a infraction or whatever, I guess the next level of legalese would be, to address the issue of only entering businesses during business hours. And what else do we have, Kevin?
That's it.
Okay. With those changes.
Just so that we, to bring this back for second reading as opposed to bringing it back for first reading, what I propose is to add to Section 5.04290, basically eliminating the right to enter at any reasonable time to basically during regular public business hours. And then we'll also add a provision that violation of the provisions of this chapter shall not be considered criminal conduct under, yeah, criminal conduct.
Just to have a point of clarification with staff, just so that we're clear, it is a tax you're saying, correct? And this is, go ahead, I want to hear your.
So just briefly, it is a tax. You know, there's two different ways that people approach business license. One is kind of the tax like we have established here, where you don't really use the business license for regulatory purposes. The other, some cities do it a different way, where they basically use it for regulatory purposes and recoup the cost of basically enforcement and for licensing purposes, the cost associated with having a business license. But it's a tax for purposes of the city of Newport Beach.
And so even though I may not love the language, it is a tax reduction, right? That is potentially what the codification is?
Yeah, so what you're doing here is you're excluding a group from paying that tax, so it is a tax reduction.
Okay, thank you.
Is the second of the motion?
I'll propose an amendment.
That was you.
Oh, I didn't, okay, well, I forgot.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, well, I, hang on, Scott. So I accept the amendments, okay? Your turn.
I move to amend the motion to reduce the cost or the fee to $50 per business and call it a fee, not a tax.
Is there a second to that?
Yes, I'll definitely second that.
Yeah, actually, you couldn't, you couldn't just change it to $50, you'd have to do a fee study to figure out exactly what the costs are associated with running the program. So you couldn't just pick an amount. It'd have to be studied and analyzed for it to be a fee.
Okay, I propose that we charge a fee commensurate with the cost to be approved by the council at a later date.
So yes, I'll second.
Councilmember Muldoon seconded that.
I'll speak to that.
Councilmember Curry.
Well, that is a $4 million assault on the city's budget in the most grossly irresponsible way possible, of somebody who sits here and spouts off the top of his head numbers that he pulls out of the air, that assault the budget and the services and our ability to provide the capital program of this community out of his own ideological pique. Now, it's one thing to get up here and have an agenda that you want to move forward, it's another thing to get up here and act thoroughly financially irresponsible, and that's what we're doing with this.
Okay, seeing no other speakers, whoop, we have one. Councilmember Muldoon.
Yeah, we are a very wealthy city, and I think to believe in less taxes and fees in the most overtaxed state in the Union is a very reasonable thing. I don't believe this will hurt the city one bit. We have amazing revenue, property value, and visitors, and I believe businesses are overtaxed, so that's why I'm supportive of this motion.
Okay, any other speakers? If not, please vote when the screen comes up.
Just for clarification purposes, I just want to make sure that the City Council is voting on items A and B with the two modifications, which is one, the right-of-entry issue as well as the criminal conduct issue that you set forth, but there was a second item in addition to the ordinance related to the resolution.
Well, we're voting on a.
Oh, you're voting on, I'm sorry, I thought, I apologize.
We're voting on the substitute motion that Councilmember Piattar brought up. Do you want to restate your motion again, Councilmember Piattar, just so we don't have a problem with this?
We'll change the tax to a fee, and the amount will be determined by a fee study to be approved by the council at a later date.
Okay, please vote.
The substitute motion failed with Councilmembers Dixon, Selig, and Curry voting no, 3-3.
Okay, so again, we're back to the main motion. Councilmember Curry, do you want to state it again? I just want to make sure we don't have any confusion here.
The main motion is to approve the recommended actions A and B as staff with the language amended by Mr. Muldoon relating to deletions of references to criminal conduct, knocking it from a misdemeanor to an infraction, and specifying that we will only enter during regular business hours, businesses.
Okay, please vote when the screen comes up.
City attorney, is that correct?
I apologize. I understood the changes to the code to be, to eliminate it from all criminal conduct as opposed to taking it from misdemeanor to infraction.
Well, you can still be cited, whatever a citation is for not having a license.
Okay, so we get no criminal conduct, which an infraction would still be criminal conduct, but allow for administrative citations.
Right, that's why I think it goes from being a misdemeanor to an infraction.
That's different because an infraction is still criminal. That's why I wanted to clarify.
We still have to have a mechanism for enforcement.
It'd be an administrative citation.
Correct, okay.
Okay.
Is everyone clear on the motion? Okay, please vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance title for 2015-6, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach, amending Newport Beach Municipal Code, Chapter 5.04, to update business license provisions. With Councilmember Piattar voting no, the motion carries 5-1.
Councilmember Piattar, did you want to make a motion to refer this to the Finance Committee?
Yeah, I would love to. I would love to propose that we forward the ordinance, our business license ordinance to the Finance Committee for further review.
I'll second. I think we just took a great step towards reducing fees throughout the city, and hopefully we can look at more.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, we'll call for the vote when the screen comes up.
We weren't able to type in the actual motion to refer back to the planning or Finance Committee, so if you can just vote on this and it will be corrected in the minutes.
Before, I'm sorry, we're confused. So the ordinance passed first reading as amended, it'll go to second reading. Mr. Piattar's motion then is to send the whole concept of business license taxes to the Finance Committee for review? We're confused.
Correct.
Which is, okay, so is everyone clear on that motion? So the Finance Committee would look at our overall business license tax.
Correct.
Correct.
With Councilmember Curry voting no, the motion carries 5-1.
All right. I thought that was a simple amendment for the Realtors. Okay, on to item number 22. This is determine whether we want to place a discussion item relative to debt management fund on a future council agenda. Staff?
Actually, this, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, this is a policy request through Council Policy A6, which asks if the council wants to spend more time on something, and this issue is Mr. Piattar's request to create a debt management fund.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had mentioned this before, I'd like to propose it to make it official. I would love to start a, the idea is to start a debt repayment fund that would allow us to pay back our two sources, main sources of debt, our CalPERS and our unfunded pension liabilities, and our Civic Center bonds. Being debt adverse, I'd really like to be able to take excess funds, like we had our $5.5 million surplus, we allocated $2.5 million towards a liability fund, which is also good savings for that future. A million dollars went to our employee obligation fund, and $2 million left, I'd love to have start our debt repayment fund. Now, I understand, and the Finance Director sent around a memo, that our certificates of participation are complex bonds, there are several of them that are out there. Some of them are tax-free, some of them are taxable. There's a prepayment penalty on it because they got a slightly lower interest rate on it, so they cannot be called, so we can't just call them back and pay them down. What we'd have to do is put an offer out there to try and buy them back at par or better and see if perhaps the financial situation of any of our lenders has changed and they'd like to sell the bond back. Well, if we don't have the money to buy it back, we won't have that option. So this fund would do that, and then it would also allow us, if we wanted to, to put the additional money in the early start program that we've got towards CalPERS, could go into this fund instead, which we would maintain control over, and then we could disperse to CalPERS as we saw fit. So that's the intent of the debt repayment fund and why I would like to see it agendized.
Councilmember Curry.
Well, two weeks ago, when Councilmember Piattar asked that this item be put on the agenda, it included a request to pay or to sell the old city hall site. My understanding from his campaign statements is that this was to be the funding mechanism for his debt reduction proposal. Now, I note that this seems to have disappeared, so I presume he's read the lease documents and figured out that the site can't be sold to the parties that he may prefer. In any event, selling that site was a bad idea with negative economic consequences to the taxpayers, and it would be financially stressful to the hotel development at exactly the wrong time, as they go before the Coastal Commission, so I'm glad to see this poorly thought-out idea abandoned. Now, the centerpiece of Mr. Piattar's campaign, and indeed all of Team Newport, was that we had too much debt associated with the Civic Center, and they were going to specifically reduce this debt. Indeed, so there's no mistake, Mr. Piattar told the Corona del Mar residents on Thursday, he was going to propose reducing the Civic Center debt, and this was duly and accurately reported in the Daily Pilot by Amy Sink this weekend. We now have an independent analysis from our financial advisors, our outside independent financial advisors. And that, saying rather that we have too much debt, the annual debt service payments are only $7.6 million in a $280 million total budget, and as determined by the bond rating agencies, that is very and exceptionally affordable. Secondly, our advisors conducted detailed analysis of the proposals to refund or pay off the debt related to the Civic Center as proposed by Mr. Piattar, and their conclusions are enlightening. It would cost the city $151.8 million to redeem $106.5 million of debt related to the Civic Center. Now, note, we only have $106 million, not $140 or $140,000. $140 or $300 or $500 million, which were some of the numbers that were used during the campaign. Put another way, our advisors have determined that it would cost $1.43 to redeem each $1 of bonds outstanding. The total cost of this proposal would be $266 million over 25 years, and the net additional cost to the city, over and above what we would currently pay if we just left them alone, would be $21 million. Now, the threshold for conducting a refunding of debt, according to the Government Finance Officers Association, is about a 3% net present value savings. In contrast, the transaction that Mr. Piotta keeps talking about would result in a negative return on investment of 14.21%, if we used cash, or a negative 17.76% or a $27 million loss if we sold refunding bonds, which is the only practical way we could do this since we don't have $151 million lying around. Now, our advisors looked at the question of what if we had not issued Build America Bonds and had issued traditional tax-exempt bonds in 2010? Indeed, Mr. Piotta has said that had he been on the council, he would not have issued Build America Bonds because he didn't like President Obama. Well, we now know what that precise cost would be. It's quantified by our financial advisors. It would have been an additional $719,000, not an insignificant sum, annually in debt service if we'd followed Mr. Piotta's advice. And because you can't call municipal bonds until 10 years, that means the total cost of his idea would have burdened the city by an additional almost $7.2 million. It's beginning to add up. Now, these numbers were not a surprise. In September, Mike Hen wrote an op-ed in the Daily Pilot. So everybody knew that that deal didn't work, that the cost exceeded the benefit, and yet it remained as a campaign theme. And here we are tonight talking about this idea in spite of the fact that everybody knows what the numbers are. So grossly and breathtakingly financially irresponsible. So how bad is this proposal? This proposal is so bad that if our financial advisors came to us and recommended that we do this, and said, "We think it's a good idea," and they sent us a bill for it, they would be fined, they would be sanctioned, and they would be potentially debarred from the public finance industry under the fiduciary standards requirements and, and rules of the Dodd-Frank law. It's that bad an idea. How bad of an idea is this? If we actually sold refunding bonds to do this, we would produce a disclosure document called an official statement, which would make us the laughing stock of America. The first section would have a plan of finance that would disclose that we're not saving any money, we're increasing our costs by $20 million. Oh, by the way, isn't that peachy? Then it would have the rating agency discussions that said, "You know, we gave Newport Beach AAA ratings because of strong financial management." It is very clear from this transaction that they no longer have strong financial management, and so we are going to downgrade their bonds. The next section would be a summary of the indemnification agreements that we would be compelled to provide to all of the financial professionals involved in this transaction because they also would have Dodd-Frank liability. Now, frankly, we use some of the best firms in the country. I doubt they want to have anything to do with us under any circumstances, but you could always find somebody on Wall Street to try and sell these bonds, but we'd indemnify them for the problems. Because the next section of the official statement would be in big, bold, capital letters, the disclosure to the bondholders, wherein the financial professionals say, "We didn't recommend this to the city. They're doing it on their own. We understand it doesn't save any money, and you buy these bonds on your own risk." And the reason they would put that in there is because, assuming that we could sell them, the next party to come knocking will be the Internal Revenue Service, who believes that tax exemption is a right, is a privilege. It's not a right. And they would look at this transaction because we've now increased the cost to the government because there's more tax-exempt debt out there, people sheltering income from taxes. And they would ask, did it meet the public purpose test? Did it save any money? No, it actually cost $27 million more. Did it reduce the amortization time? No. Did it fund additional projects? No. Did it relieve a financial stress that threatened default? No. And accordingly, the IRS will take a dim view of increase in the amount and loss to the Treasury, and will very likely, in order to fulfill these campaign promises. And so what they'd likely do is declare these bonds taxable. At what point, all of the investors who bought them will come back to our door demanding to be made whole, and we'll have to come up with $151 million of cash to pay them off. But it doesn't stop there. When that happens, the SEC will come knocking, and just like they did in the County of Orange following the bankruptcy, they will look to see who were the clowns on the city council who voted for this nonsense, and seek to have them indicted for fraud and removed from public office. And you're not going to be able to claim ignorance when that happens. So let us acknowledge the truth of this idea and dispose of it now before we spend any more staff time and consulting time to satisfy Mr. Piotta's fantasies. Now, let's turn to this idea of setting up a fund and buying our bonds back at par. Our bonds are 40, are priced at $1.43. Mr. Piotta, based apparently on his own financial experience and knowledge, would have us believe that people who own them would be willing to sell them for a dollar when they're worth $1.43. That is fantasy. That's the greater fool theory. It's like me calling my broker and saying, "Here's $1,000. I want you to buy 100 shares of Apple at 10." Well, the problem is, Apple's selling at 126. So that order is going to sit there unfilled for decades, and my $1,000 will sit there. And if I send him $1,000 every year, it'll sit there and accumulate and do nothing. Now, that's the real plan, because it takes money out of our capital improvement plan and out of our budget, and what he's really trying to do is simply sabotage the budget by putting money in rat holes where it can't be spent. Now, the fact of it is, our bonds were bought by USAA and PIMCO, the two most sophisticated bond pricing organizations in the world. It's not likely, despite Mr. Piotta's financial wherewithal and wisdom, that they're going to sell bonds worth $1.40 for a dollar. That's just not going to happen. So all this proposal would do was put money in a hole, take it out of our budget, and have it waste away and lose purchasing power. So let us dispose of this idea today, and let us move forward. Let's just add up how much money Mr. Piotta is costing us. His proposal not to have sold bonds would have cost us $7 million. His proposal five minutes ago to cut the business license fee would have cost us $4 million. He gave $125 million of fee cuts to his buddies who owned docks two weeks ago. This proposal to refund the bonds, refund all of them, cost us $20 million. Now, it's one thing for, you know, pity pity politics stuff, but now we have incompetence, and we have just incompetence, driving decisions that can cost this city and the taxpayers of this city millions of dollars, and we cannot tolerate it, and we should not tolerate it, and the people of this city should not tolerate it. Thank you.
Is this already agendized to talk about, or are we just talking about agendizing still?
We're talking about agendizing it.
Just checking.
Any, any other comments from council? Seeing none, I'll open it for public comment. Anybody from the public want to comment on this item? We're not talking about the item. We're just talking about whether we want to talk about the item at a subsequent meeting.
Mayor Selig, Colonel Cassidy, I was asked to come tonight by a prominent citizen, once again, a citizen I consider to be prominent. Once again, I apologize for my dress. I was invited at the last minute. I want to affirm a lot of what Mr. Curry had to say. The proper forum for this item, and do all due respect, Mr. Piotta, is not unlike item 21, is the Finance Committee. You were, you were, helped us to form a Finance Committee. There's a lot of exceptional talent. This, this is not an item for this, this panel. Okay, and if I, one, it's not mindful of the outstanding staff that Mr. Kiff hires, trains, employs, and manages to bring it all to this forum, first, first and foremost. It's, it goes totally against the concept of doctrinal administrative review, looking at things at the committee level. It's, it's politics, and some of the numbers, you can question whether or not leveraging the assets of the community at 4.45%, I think what the Finance Advisor says. But at the same time, you're earning 27%, 28% at PERS, and, and you might question whether that rate's a good rate or not. Germany's borrowing money, they're, Germany's paying people. People have to pay money, point eight tenths of percent to put your money with the German government now. So you, numbers can say anything. We don't, the rates could change by the time this comes back to council. This is not the right place to be having this discussion at all. It needs to go to the Finance Committee and, and let, debate the numbers. Having, having been active, or been to those meetings the last three years and seeing some of the things, I even asked Dan to have some of the investment people to come in early so the Finance Committee would get to talk to what we're earning on the funds that we get. Another thing that Mr. Curry firmly said, the money doesn't come in equally every month. The money comes in twice a year. So thanks to the expertise of Dan and his staff and his advisors that the city employs, the money has to, has to sit there for a while and, and earn a rate. So there has to, there's, this is a concept of leverage. You can't, you can't be paying money back when you owe 500, potentially $500 million to your past employees and your current employees. You've got to keep some leverage in, in the tax base. I affirm what you said with item 21. I really was going to compare and contrast the other item. That needs to go to the Finance Committee. If there's anything that needs to go to the Finance Committee so that we all can be enlightened, some of which we get, unfortunately, Mr. Hen's not there anymore. Mr. Curry is still there. Mr. Petros is there. And that's the proper forum, okay? I spent 31 years, no longer, but as a CPA, worked for three of the Big Eight accounting firms. This is a, this is a specific, if I may continue just to finish up, Mr. Selig.
Pretty quick, please.
This, this is an item that requires specific technical knowledge, and that, that's, I appreciate what you're, that you're raising this issue, but this, this is not the forum to have this. The forum for this is at the Finance Committee, and I would encourage each of you to look at it that way. You put some trusted people there. Let them look at this, and, and this, this doesn't have to be before the council at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other speakers on this item? Okay, seeing none, bring it back to council. Councilmember Muldoon.
Thank you, just a couple questions. So in order to be able to discuss it, can we discuss it now at all?
Well, you can make comments that are related to whether or not you should have a discussion of it, but it should really be focused on whether you want to bring it back or not, as opposed to an actual discussion of the merits.
All right, well, I'd like to bring it back for other options, if not just for reduction of City Hall, which maybe we don't do because it's too dangerous, but other, other means we can use the Fund Four, including unfunded pension liabilities.
Okay, well, we have to deal, whoop, another speaker here. Mayor Pro Tem Dixon.
Well, just a point of clarification, what, what-
Where, where, the proper motion would be whether we want to consider this or not consider it.
Okay.
Not, not to discuss.
I'll hold my comments till later.
Okay, so is there a motion on the item that's on the agenda, Councilman Curry?
I would move that we not consider this item.
Is there a second?
I second.
Okay, any, any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I have no problem following Mr. Cassidy's advice, and I have no problem referring this to the Finance Committee. So I'll propose an alternative motion to refer to the Finance Committee.
I don't think that's within the scope of what we have on the agenda, but I'll defer to the city attorney on that. Seems to be a more constrained item than we had on the, on the previous item.
I agree with that. If you want to do that, maybe you should bring it back for the larger discussion of the item. Maybe that's an alternative, if you want a guidance from them. But it doesn't seem to be, fall squarely within what's on the agenda.
Okay.
Okay, so if there's no further comments, please vote on the motion. Councilman Curry, please restate the motion.
Yeah, my motion is to terminate the discussion on this topic.
Okay.
Can I? We're, we're to not bring it back for discussion. Not to bring it back, there you go.
Yes, the motion is to not bring it back to a future agenda item. It just follows what's on the agenda, but the motion to not bring it back on a future agenda fails three-three with councilmembers Piotta, Duffield, and Muldoon voting no.
Okay. Propose a motion to bring it back to the next city council meeting.
As do I, and I actually can, I care very much about-
Would you want to second that motion then, Councilmember Muldoon?
That's what I'm doing, and as, sure, I won't make a speak-in motion. I want me just, yes, I will second it. Now, may I make comment?
Sure.
Yeah, and I'm very concerned about Mr. Curry's insights on this, so it probably will involve other, other items that could be paid off.
Okay, if there's no further-
What are we voting?
All right, so now you will know because it's the motion to continue talking about it.
It's the opposite of the motion-
Are you telling her how to vote?
So as staff-
I think I heard you tell her how to vote.
As staff understands it now, the motion before you is the recommended action. Is that correct?
There is no recommended action, so the action is, well, it's his recommended action.
It's, it's, oh, place a discussion item on, regarding a debt management fund on the next council's agenda. Is that, are we clear on that?
Correct. It's the opposite of the motion we just voted on.
So that motion to bring it back at a future agenda fails three-three with Council- Mayor Pro Tem Dixon, Mayor Selig, and Councilmember Curry voting no.
So the net result of the, of the two conflicting motions is no action, correct?
That's right.
Okay.
Can't, all right. May I speak now?
Well, the, you can't make any other motions. You can bring something up at the next meeting, but-
Can I bring something up at the Finance Committee, recommend something?
You, you can do that at the Finance Committee meeting. You can't do it here.
I can't, I don't say it here.
Yeah, we can't take action.
Okay, all right.
You can do that at the Finance Committee.
All right, so I don't need to make a speech?
Right, unless you want to. But you can't make a motion. Okay, Madam Clerk.
Motion for reconsideration, a motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the City Council at either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Okay, any motions for reconsideration? Okay, seeing none, we're adjourned.